...our temporary home here for today's meeting. We are beginning at 10:27 a.m. This meeting of the Taxi and Limousine Commission. Present are Commissioners Carone, Arut, Yaskey, Wainshaw, Gonzalez, and Moreno. And I know that other Commissioners are on their way.
They're going to slightly keep that over time.
How's that? Still? How's that?
Is it on for a second?
Or that? So first of all, just before we get started, a couple of notes. I want to thank the folks really on the TLC staff. First of all, let me know why we're here. We are, for folks of the industry, as you know, we were temporarily displaced from our office at 33 Beaver Street for a couple of weeks due to Hurricane Sandy. We are now back in and we are doing business there as usual. However, the building is still being powered by a generator and the power has been unstable. There have been a couple of outages and didn't want to have a large public meeting when we might have a power outage in the middle of the day. This happened last week and everybody has to walk down the 19 floors. So that's why we moved here. We're going to just go day by day with the building. If there they get the work done in time, then we'll have our December meeting back at Beaver Street. If not, then we'll have it another location, perhaps here or perhaps somewhere else. We will put out notice, you know, well in advance so that people know. I know, I'm sure, you know, everybody here was touched one way or another by Hurricane Sandy. Some folks in the extended TLC family suffered grievously. I mean, I know that Darlene Sanchez, who I thought, I was told is here, although I don't see at the moment, there, you know. I know that, you know, what happened with your home and your family. For people who deal with Dottie at Long Island City, you know, I know many in the industry reached out to say who lost her home and, you know, has had to deal with that. I was just touched and maybe not amazed, but touched deeply by how many people reached out in the industry to say, is there anything that we can do to help and support Dottie? And we have other folks at, of course, the agency, who were displaced from their homes and are, some are back in and some are not. And for people who were trying to make a living as drivers of taxis or livery cars or black cars, not just the days immediately following the hurricane, but of course the gas shortage then, on top of that, I know what people went through for those couple of weeks. I just want to say publicly a thank you to the TLC inspectors who really turned Woodside and Floyd Bennett Field in Brooklyn into a gas station for a week dispensing fuel free of charge, you know, courtesy of FEMA, to TLC vehicles for a week. And it was, you know, overnight in the freezing cold at Floyd Bennett Field, that's not their regular job, but our inspectors just were, absolutely rose to it and said, we're going to do whatever we can do to help out folks in this industry. And driver after driver who was so grateful on those lines, you know, I know made it underscored that it was absolutely worthwhile. So I just want to again thank our inspectors for the tremendous work that they did. I know Deputy Commissioner Scanlon is here or was here and his, your crew really shone. And thank you again for that. Speaking of deputy commissioners and our senior staff, is Allison Segal here in the auditorium? Yes, could Allison just stand for a brief moment? Allison is our new Assistant Commissioner in the Licensing Division, working with Gary Weiss there, replacing Georgia Steele, who I know many of you know and we're used to dealing with. Allison just joined us a couple of weeks ago from the City Department of Housing and Preservation and Development, having had, served with great distinction there. She is already serving with great distinction here and I know you will get to know Allison very quickly and I'm sure you will feel very well-served by her. Those are the business items or the notes before we begin. We have two items on the agenda today. We have a public hearing on a rule regarding both, or two rules regarding continuity of the in-taxi credit card payment systems and a rule regarding the use of smartphone apps for passengers to hail taxi cabs. Before we get to that public hearing, we also have scheduled a vote on the proposed rule to change the taxi roof light so that it doesn't have off-duty, separate off-duty lights. There's just a, would be one light. On means the taxi is available. Off means the taxi is unavailable, whether that's because it's off-duty or because it's occupied. From the point of view of the passenger on the street, they don't, it's irrelevant whether it's off-duty or occupied. They just need to know, can I stick my hand up and flag it down or not? I know that there's some diversity of opinion among the Commissioners on this. If people want to have discussion, we can, I'd welcome that discussion now and, you know, if the bulk of Commissioners would like to move forward with that rule, we will do so today. We had the public hearing. I don't think there's, you know, any further input necessary in that regard. Commissioners, would you like to discuss or move directly to a vote?
Move to vote.
Okay. So, you know what? Thank you, Commissioner. We do have minutes and it would be a shame to leave them unadopted. So before you are the minutes of the September 20th, 2012 Commission meeting, I move that we adopt those minutes as they are in front of you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Those minutes are adopted. We also have base applications now. If this page is open here.
Yes.
It could be counted off the ballot. We, Allison, are you presenting these base applications or is someone else? Very good. Thank you. Director.
Everyone, my name is Angelique Miel and I'm from Licensing Supervisor. We have 26 bases for your approval today.
I move that the Reformation of Licensing be adopted and that all of the listed base applications be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All right. The ayes have it. With that, we are now ready for Commission action on the roof light rules. Why don't we do a show of hands, just so we can have an accurate count. All in favor of adopting the proposed rule on the roof light, say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And all opposed, no?
One opposed.
Okay. By a vote of seven, two, but a very distinguished one, then that rule is adopted. We will now have the public hearing on the proposed rules and Commissioners, I think we should, I'm sure this makes sense, the, there are two proposed rules. We will have a presentation on both rules and then one public hearing because they are kind of interrelated in many ways. Whether you've signed up to speak on one or the other, we'll call up everybody in order. You can speak on either or both proposed rule rather than have two public hearings. That would be repetitive. So we have two presentations and the first is Deputy Commissioner Chabra, no? The first is the proposed rule on in-taxi credit card processing and who is doing that presentation? Yes, Joe.
Good morning. I am Joe Rousen and I am the TPEP Project Manager here at TLC. I'm going to be talking to you guys a little bit about the proposed rules to continue in taxi credit card acceptance. So today, credit cards are enabled in taxi cabs by the Taxi Cab Passenger Enhancements Program, or the TPEP. The TPEP is the system of hardware and software that's installed in all Medallion taxi cabs that provides for credit card processing, GPS technology, and automated trip sheet collection, text messaging through the driver information monitor, and the passenger facing screen in the back of the taxi cabs. Credit card usage in Medallion taxi cabs has climbed steadily since it was introduced in 2008 in New York City cabs and now accounts for approximately 50% of all payment of fares in taxi cabs. In addition, the TPEP enables the TLC to collect electronic trip sheet records to the number of 500,000 records per day. This is really important data that helps us to fuel policy formation, enforce some of the TLC rules, and even allows us to reunite lost property with their owners. Some of the metrics that we pulled from the TPEP during Hurricane Sandy were incredibly useful for helping to understand what the transportation landscape looked like in the wake of Hurricane Sandy when the MTA was shut down. And we also used it to help us fuel some policy decisions like lifting that HOV restrictions on taxis and other four higher vehicles on the major entry points into Manhattan. Another important feature that was useful during Hurricane Sandy was the text messaging capability. This enables us to typically message drivers in cabs and give them information about traffic alerts and other types of city events. During Hurricane Sandy, we were actually able to use that to give really timely information to the drivers about bridge and tunnel closures and also to communicate directly with them about the HOV restrictions, the ride-sharing program, and information on the gas shortages and gas rationing. And then finally, probably the most recognizable for the riding public is the passenger information monitor, which is the taxi television screen in the backseat of cabs. This provides news and entertainment content and TLC is able to leverage this to display public service announcements from TLC and other New York City agencies as well as taxi information using the interactive screen to passengers. So the rules before you today are the proposed TPEP 2.0 rules. What these would do is replace the exclusive credit card equipment contracts that are set to expire in early 2013 with specifications for equipment and processing services that would use an authorized provider approach. So this authorized provider approach would allow any technology provider that can meet our TLC requirements that are outlined in these rules to apply to become an authorized TPEP provider. And it also outlines the process by which these technology providers are able to apply. Authorizing TPEP providers rather than signing exclusive contracts with technology providers as we've done in the past, we believe will allow us to revise standards and incorporate new technologies as they become available and increase competition. We think this will lead to superior products and pricing for Medallion owners and for drivers. In addition to outlining this process for authorizing providers, these rules also provide the actual technical specifications for what the equipment must do in the back of the taxi cab. They contain a lot of the existing technical specifications that are already in the TPEP contracts, but we've also included some upgrades to functionality that we think will both improve the passenger experience and provide benefit to the city. Some of these upgrades include updates to the PIM content, improvements to our survey capabilities, new payment functionality, and smartphone application integration that complements the e-hail rules that we are also having a hearing on today. We envision that the TPEP will continue to serve as a backbone onto which other innovative technologies can be integrated into the back of a taxi cab. Some examples of this are the Accessible Dispatch Program that was recently launched and then obviously smartphone applications. So these next few slides summarize some of the upgrades to the TPEP functionality that we've requested in the proposed rules. On the PIM screen, we've asked for more visibility into the rate code and the current fare so that the passenger can see that at any time, looking at child-friendly content during the day, providing Spanish speakers with some access to Spanish language content on key screens, expanding the passenger map, and expanding TLC's audio and visual content, both time and space on the screen. In addition, we have some survey improvements that allow us to increase the frequency at which we push out surveys to cabs and receive the results of those surveys, as well as letting us target the distribution and incorporating basic skip logic, which will allow us to be a little bit more sophisticated in our data collection. On the payment front, we have proposed a few new things. We are allowing TPEP providers at their option to provide electronic receipts and capture signatures electronically, allowing passengers to be able to authorize payment before the trip is complete, allowing TPEP riders to provide the option to give passengers split fares, and we've also aligned the proposed rules with the proposed council legislation, giving passengers with visual disabilities the ability to pay unassisted in cabs. As I mentioned before, these rules also do complement the e-hail rules that are up for discussion today. The rules do include for integration with the TPEP. We specify specific integration that we would like the TPEP to provide, including giving fares to the smartphone apps, allowing the smartphone apps to indicate when payment has been completed, and also provide all of the payment data that's necessary to be captured as a part of the electronic trip sheet. A few more additional requirements. These rules require for geofencing rate code four, which would prevent being able to initiate that out-of-town rate while within the five boroughs of Manhattan, allowing TPEP providers to pay drivers directly using electronic debits, accounting for the healthcare fee, and expanding our text message capability to be able to give more flexibility on scheduling these messages. So those are just a few of the key upgrades that we've requested. In preparation for today's hearing, we have been meeting with industry stakeholder groups for the past month to review these rules with them and to get their preliminary feedback. This list of stakeholders is summarized for you here on this slide. And that concludes our overview of the TPEP 2.0 rules package. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. For Commissioners, for those of you who have not met Joe Rousen, she's been with us for a period of months now, managing, hired specifically to manage the TPEP program and has really been doing outstanding, Joe, before you sit down, has really been doing an outstanding job and I just want to thank her for that. She works under Deputy Commissioner Chabra. Commissioners, if you want to ask questions of Joe, we can do that or, but there's going to be an extensive public hearing on this as well, but I don't want to, if people have questions about this, just shout out, don't tell me, don't be shy. Otherwise, we'll move in. Joe will be here so she can come back if we want questions later. Ashwini, are you the next presenter?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Ashwini Chabra, Deputy Commissioner for Policy and Planning here at the TLC, and I'd like to talk to you about the proposed taxi cab smartphone app rules that you have before you. Before we actually jump into the rules, I thought it'd be helpful to provide a little bit of context, a little bit of overview on the state of technology in taxis and in the FHV segment. Joe, I think very capably described the TPEP program, which as you know, has been in the taxis since 2008 and has, the primary, and I think the most notable feature of TPEP is universal acceptance of credit cards. Prior to TPEP, prior to this agency's, I think, I think full were thinking on requiring the taxi cab, the credit card readers in taxis, there was a little bit of hit or miss. You didn't know if you were going to get into a cab where you could pay with credit card. I think it's been a boon to the industry. It was very helpful through, during the most recent recession, that businesses were able to leverage the 13,237 yellow taxis and people were able to pay with credit card. So we're building on technology that already exists here and basically want to expand that to go from you can pay today with cash or credit card and increasingly people are using smartphone technology for small ticket purchases. People use it at CVS, they use it at the coffee shop, and we're hearing increasing from our customers that they would like to use this technology in taxis as well. At the same time, you should know for the past year and a half or so, there have been smartphone apps that function in the FHV sector. So you can request a black car on your smartphone today. You've been able to do that for the past year and a half now. You can pay for that trip via your smartphone. The rules before you would expand that now to the yellow segment. And if you look at other markets nationwide and internationally, these smartphone applications are in use and we believe these rules would allow New York to, in effect, bring this technology to our regulated segments as well. So I think a quick summary of what these rules do. The proposed rules will allow taxi passengers and drivers to use apps that enable the passenger request taxi service to, in effect, extend the reach of their hail and will enable the driver to receive this request, confirm that he or she intends to pick up the passenger. As I mentioned, they're in widespread use in other cities and here in New York in the livery and black car sectors. App developers have shown interest in marketing these apps for use in New York City taxis and passengers have shown interest in being able to hail and pay for taxi rides with their smartphone. However, our current rules don't permit this. The proposed rule would permit apps that allow passengers to e-hail a taxi and would allow the passenger to pay for that ride through their smartphone app, either as part of an e-hail transaction or as a standalone payment transaction. So here's a, here's a sort of a summary of how the smartphone hailing transaction works. A passenger would hail a taxi from their smartphone using one of our, one of the approved apps. These people would have, these apps would have to get a license from us in order to be an approved app and to, for that, they have to meet the various specifications set forth in our rules. A driver hears this notification and pulls over. This is very important and we'll talk about it in detail later. What we will not be permitting under our framework here is for drivers to be able to respond to hails while the vehicle is in motion. That is something that our rules currently don't permit. We would not, we're not taking to change that in the current rulemaking. Driver pulls over, receives the e-hail either on their smartphone or through the TPEP system. There is a driver information monitor where we currently message drivers today. We could leverage the existing technology to accomplish that function as well. They can then accept and confirm the pickup of the hail. Generally, it's in the area, the input we've received from the tech developers who are seeking to provide this technology is that, and this is intuitive, that drivers really aren't going to go too far out of their way for these trips. It's really a method by which, I'm going to borrow the phraseology, it allows a driver to sort of look around corners. So the estimate we've been given is drivers will go three or five blocks out of their way to get a hail. This facilitates that ability. After accepting the hail, the driver goes off duty, turns off their roof light so that as they're going to the pickup, there's no passenger confusion as to whether that cab is available or not. The driver picks up the passenger and then engages the meter as is the norm. It is the meter that calculates the fare. Our rules do not permit of an independent calculation of the fare. We think the meter is a, we have the benefit in this market of every cab having a meter. We're going to leverage that and it'll be the meter fare that will be transmitted to the app. And there's no manual keying in of that fare. It's automated. And then the passenger pays for the fare using cash, credit card, swiping it in the backseat readers, or through their smartphone app if they're using an app that permits for payment. Some of the benefits of smartphone apps, I'll go over these, there are, that we believe makes these attractive is reduced wait times for passengers, more efficient cruising for drivers, and possibly some increased service for trips leaving the Manhattan Central Business District. And I can elaborate on these some. An app may enable a passenger to get the attention of a cruising taxi driver who's a few blocks away, who otherwise wouldn't be aware of the passenger. Taxi drivers who are aware of available fares nearby are also able to cruise more efficiently, saving both time and burning less fuel. And drivers will also, we believe, be more inclined to take fares outside the Central Business District if they believe that there may be a higher likelihood that they can get a fare for the backhaul trip instead of deadheading back. Some, the possibility of some more business for taxi drivers. Currently, our statistics show that taxis are occupied only approximately 40% of the time during their shift. Adding one or two extra trips per shift could improve driver earnings materially. Also, the additional payment convenience for passengers, an app that allows passengers to pay taxi fares has benefits separate and apart from just e-hailing. As I mentioned, it may offer a more convenient payment option than swiping. For example, if you're able to prepay for your trip, it's got your credit card information already loaded, it has your standard tip amount, if you want to set one preloaded, it allows the passenger the ability to arrive at their destination, the payment is already done, and step out. And the driver, it saves time for the driver, it saves time for the passenger, and what we've heard from drivers is that that crucial 45 seconds to a minute is often the difference between getting another fare or not. It may also make for easier record keeping if you're able to get an email of your receipt and we know from the experience of taxis working with businesses, that allows people to use, to leverage the yellow taxi market for corporate car service purposes. And we believe there's some demand for these apps. We recently ran an in-cab survey on the TPEP screens. The response we got there was that 70% of the respondents own a smartphone and between 55 and 60% of the respondents said they would like the ability to use their smartphone to hail a taxi, they would like the ability, same number said that they would like the ability to pay for their taxi ride through their smartphone. So I think we need to be responsive to the needs of our customers, but we need to do so in a way that protects passengers and ensures safe and reliable service, which then brings us to some of the issues that smartphone applications raise and how I believe these rules seek to address those issues. Perhaps top of this list is distracted driving. So an e-hail app that requires instant driver trip acceptance could increase the likelihood of distracted driving. This is something we definitely want to protect against. So the proposed rules require that e-hailing apps would be inoperable by the driver while their vehicle is in motion. Our rules currently prohibit the use of electronic communication devices while the vehicle's in motion. This would simply extend that. We believe this can be done. The TPEP systems that are in place today adhere to this. We message the drivers and their fleets message the drivers will often, it'll be in relation to fare opportunities and others such messaging, Amber Alerts and the sort. A driver will get an audible signal, they need to pull over, and that's when they get the message. The, a second concern would be the potential risk of overcharge. Anytime you veer away from a metered fare, which we think that's a gold standard, it's not something we want to disrupt. We want to ensure that these apps enable passenger payment and in some of the applications that are in operation in other cities, permit the driver to basically see the fare on the meter and then manually enter that into the smartphone and that's what the passenger pays. We seek to avoid that. There's just a risk of inadvertent error and we don't, and because we have the technology, we have the TPEP in the cars, that takes the metered fare. The TPEP integrating with the smartphone app avoids any need for manual entry and avoids the potential for error. I would say the next, the next risk to discuss is the increased risk or the perception of refusals. This is a, this is a big concern. So drivers en route to picking up a passenger that has e-hailed them may pass by street hailing passengers. Those passengers may feel that they are being refused. Now, as we discussed before, accepting the hail means you switch off your roof light so the passenger may still see a car go by, may see that car stop a block later, pick someone else up and feel that they've been refused. That's something we need to be cognizant of, the, and we have to, and we have to be sure that... That's something we need to be cognizant of, and we have to be sure that the drivers extinguish their roof light. We can do that through TPEP. And we want to ensure that e-hailing doesn't become a vehicle for destination-based refusal. So our rules explicitly limit the information that can be conveyed to a driver through an app. So a driver will only see the pickup location, they will not see the destination location, they will not get information like the passenger's name or anything that might give them any sense of whether that person will take more or less. For a driver, an e-hail should be no different than a hand in the air. And so these rules strive to achieve that. There is the potential reduction in supply to the street hail market. This is a concern that we have to be mindful of as well. We certainly don't want to endanger the street hail system, which works well for many New Yorkers, including businesspeople and tourists. But we see a potential for impact on the street hail system only if drivers are able to collect more for e-hail trips than for street hail trips. These rules would limit what drivers can, the payment that a driver can receive for an e-hail, to the metered fare. So whatever's on the meter and whatever tip that the passenger voluntarily adds to that is the payment that a driver is receiving for an e-hail trip. During the course of this, a lot of the conversations surfaced stories about the way the taxis used to operate when there were radios in the cabs 30 years ago. And you hear these horror stories where drivers were cherry-picking because you had the radios in the cabs, and there was the potential for more lucrative fares from radio calls than there were from street hail trips, and we seek to avoid that. And we think with the technology today, which is very different from radios and dispatchers, we can mitigate that. But this is a concern we have, we want to be mindful of that, and we wanted to flag that for you. There's the concern that we have that you need a smartphone in order to avail yourself of this technology. So not everyone's got a smartphone. So the notion that every passenger has an equal chance of hailing a taxi is something that's deeply ingrained in the public perception, it's something that I certainly espouse. And if the ability to own a smartphone increases the likelihood that a person can hail a taxi, there's some risk of that resulting in unfair outcome. I'm not going to say that that is not going to happen. We don't think that's going to happen, but it's something that we certainly need to monitor. If we do see that that is an outcome, we need to revisit this issue. And then I think the final point there, which is a real concern, is that some livery and black car industry leaders have told us that allowing taxi e-hailing will unfairly harm livery and black car business, and we acknowledge this concern. But we don't believe that our regulatory policy should be driven by a desire to shift business from one sector or preserve the current market share as it exists between sectors. It really is, we've got to be passenger-focused. So if passengers find it more efficient or convenient to e-hail a taxi in some instances rather than calling for a livery or black car, our regulations shouldn't prevent the passenger from attaining the service in the manner he or she wishes. Our guiding principle here has to be sort of the public interest rather than any particular private interest. I think, so you've seen the list of the stakeholder conversations we've had. These have been very fruitful dialogues. I think we've met at this point, we've had more than 18 separate stakeholder meetings over the last three weeks. We've gotten some very helpful feedback on these rules, both the TPEP and the smartphone rules. And we will summarize that for the commissioners once we've got a complete catalog of those comments. So happy to answer any questions at this point.
Well, thank you, for commissioners who did not realize that Ashwini had a background as a transaction lawyer. That was reminded of the SEC registration statements that list all the risks and go through them in detail for full disclosure. So thank you. That was quite even-handed and very helpful.
The footnotes to the financials are in the
Yes, of course. It's all in the footnotes. But again, Commissioner, if you have questions, obviously Ashwini will be here throughout the hearing and can return later for questions if you like. I'll underscore for me, there's a lot of material in here. For me, the two key points that I've felt are, we have to make sure we address, if, from the perspective of the passenger, if you do believe, as I do, that an app might help a passenger find a taxi sooner, and if you think that's true, then I believe the consequence that is, then we want to give the passenger whatever options are technologically out there. The two concerns that I think we need to address a regulator, consumer protection and safety, the rules as drafted do make sure that the app has to use the metered rate. And in other markets, apps operate by having drivers enter in the fare on their smartphone, and then that's what the passenger gets charged. I just want to be very clear, our rules do not permit that. The fare has to come from the meter, and the payment goes through the same TPEP system. I think that is very important. And then the second is the distracted driving concern. And again, here, we've tried to, we have in our rules to address that by requiring that the app, not just that the driver doesn't use the, sit around, you know, drive around looking at the phone, but the app not accept a driver input if the vehicle is in motion. So we've tried to address those two, what I think are the two key concerns here. Anyway, commissioners, if there are questions for Ashwini, otherwise we'll start the hearing. There are many speakers. Let me just say, I'm looking at the list of people who've signed up to speak. In many cases, there are multiple people who have given the same organizational affiliation. I won't call you out by name right now, but, you know, John Doe Company, Jane Doe, same company. I would invite you to kind of testify together as a group rather than, you know, four or five times throughout the hearing. I think that would be easier for everybody. The first speaker is John Acerno from Executive Transportation. I'm sorry, Mira has a point to make.
Proposed rules were published on October 30th. The CAPA deadline for public comment is today, November 29th, but we're going to hold the record open until December 10th. So if you have additional comments that you haven't submitted by today, you have until December 10th to submit them on both the e-hail and the TPEP rules.
Thank you. First speaker is John Acerno from Executive Transportation, followed by George Laslow at Laslow Consulting.
And also on two points, each speaker has three minutes, and please identify the topic that you are going to speak on, whether it's the e-hail or the TPEP rules, and what
Or both.
Or both, and what entity you represent.
And third is Tony Ialucci. These are the names in which they were submitted. I know that there are stakeholders here who have had extensive comment, and we may move this around a little bit. John Acerno, followed by George Laslow, then Tony Ialucci. Yes, John.
Good morning. I'm here to speak about the e-hail rules. I am the president of the Executive Transportation Group. We operate 14 black car bases in New York with approximately 1,500 franchise drivers. We provide approximately 2 million transportation trips per year. And I'm here to talk about an issue that we feel very strongly about. For background, I'd like you to know I've been involved in the taxi industry my whole life. My great-grandfather came from Italy to Ellis Island in 1917, and he listed his occupation as chauffeur. And he began driving a taxi in the city around that time. His son, my grandfather, followed in his footsteps, and my dad and his brother formed a taxi company called Love Taxi, which was originally a fleet taxi operation, and then became a two-way radio dispatch taxi company back in the '60s through '80s. Back in the '60s and through the '80s, taxis had radios in them, which allowed both hails and dispatches. And in 1982, pursuant to the Smith Commission, which was commissioned by then-Mayor Koch, regulations were passed to make a new class of business and to eliminate the radios out of taxicabs. That happened over a period of years, and in 1987, the radios were eliminated from taxis, and there was a split in the industry, which produced the black car industry. So as a result of the TLC regulations back then, distinct industries formed. Taxis took hails by regulations, which were the next available pickup, by seeing a person in light of sight. Black cars, liveries, and limos served those customers who wished to be picked up at certain times called dispatches. In the early days, dispatches took phone orders and delivered them to drivers over radios. Today, many, if not all, of the dispatches are automated. And in my company, computers match customers and cars in milliseconds, providing swift and efficient transportation for thousands of people every day. Today, about 40% of the work in the black car industry is on a daily basis for immediate pickup. Those dispatches are created by phone calls, by the internet ordering, and by smartphone applications, which go through a computer system and are directly routed to cars. The smartphone applications would be the same smartphone applications or similar ones to the ones that taxicabs will use. Today, the TLC represents approximately 50,000 vehicles. You've got black cars, which have approximately 8,000 vehicles, limos, approximately 8,000, 13,000 taxis, and approximately 22,000 to 23,000 liveries. This rule
I understand the, please, you go ahead and do, complete the testimony, because, you know, we
Thank you.
understand your role here.
Why is this rule important? It's important because the industry is made up of several sectors which serve the public. And this rule specifically focuses on one. The other parts of this industry, which represent 2/3 or 3/4 of the industry, are already providing this service. And the issues that were raised, the need for a smartphone, is something that we see, most people have smartphones today. I have a smartphone today. If I were to go and order a car today, I would take my smartphone, I'd press a button, or I'd call, and I would get my car downstairs. What the rules, as they are currently being presented, suggest is, is that I can do that now and order a taxicab instead of a black car, or instead of a livery car, or instead of a limousine. We think this is a zero-sum game. There are only so many people who are ordering cars, and we think that by allowing taxis now to do both, to hail on the street or to be ordered by an app, basically moves people from one industry to another. And the comment that Taxi and Limousine Commission is not responsible for the movement of one sector of transportation or customers from one sector to another, I think is flawed. I think the TLC needs to know that its industries that it is regulating are healthy, and by moving transportation and customers from one sector to another, you are damaging that sector. We aren't going to create more people wanting to travel, we are going to create a shift from one sector to another. People are currently being serviced through apps by several parts of the industry that you regulate. And you are now saying, by changing the paradigm, because the paradigm up until this point is I raise my hand, I get a cab. If someone raises their hand two blocks before, they get that cab. We may not like it, you may feel that it's not fair, but that's the rules that New Yorkers have lived with for decades. We are now changing the paradigm. We are now saying, if I'm a smart guy with a smartphone, I get to press a button and shazam, that car bypasses, he puts his off-duty light on, and he bypasses people who are not so smart to come and pick me up. So if this rule were in effect today, standing right here, as I leave, I will press my button, and then there'll be a taxicab downstairs with an off-duty sign on that's waiting for me. And when someone else is standing there with their hand up, who either doesn't have a smartphone or wants to hail in the street, that person will be discriminated against. I think it's very important to point that out, that the paradigm is going to shift. It's not a matter of whether or not the driver can see around corners, it's a matter of the customer now has a tool that he didn't have before, and you're going to allow, and you are going to allow prearrangement. That's the shift in paradigm. The shift in paradigm is, this is prearrangement, and this has been in place for decades, and customers have been serviced this way. The other thing that I think is very
John, let me do ask you some of them, because we have 30 some odd, nope, 40 some odd people who've signed up, and I just want to make sure we get, you know, through everybody.
Two final points. By allowing this rule, you create the same discriminations that occurred 25 years ago. People without apps will not be serviced. The second is, is if you look at the definition of hail as it's proposed, the new definition allows people not only to use an app to hail, but also to make an electronic call. So it may be inadvertent, it may be advertent, but you've allowed the use of technology to change and to change the way people ask for transportation in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have two quick questions. Mr. Acerno. Two quick questions. When you said 40% of your work is for immediate pickup, is that just your business, or is that you're representing the black car industry?
That is the black car industry.
Okay, and then the term immediate pickup, how do you define that in temporal, as a temporal definition?
I would define it as, I'm ready to leave, I'm either going to press a button and the car will be downstairs, or I'm calling and saying, I need a car now.
When will the car be available, though?
The car would be available when the next available car can pick me up, whether it's
On average, when will that car be available?
Under 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
John, I guess my question is, if you're correct that it's a zero-sum game, that there are just so many passengers a day, you know, 1.2 million people a day that are going to want to take a trip somehow, if this shifts somebody from a black car trip to a taxi trip, does that mean that somebody else gets shifted from the taxi to the black car?
No, because this is an option that was previously unavailable. The shift is one-way. The shift is from the services that currently provide the service to one that will newly provide the service.
So, but then does that mean that it's a more efficient use of the vehicles that are out there? And I say that, understanding that, you know, when Mity says efficiency, people hear that it's cold-blooded, and, you know, who knows what happens on the other side of that? But just recognizing that, I mean, isn't that the implication of that, that it means more passengers into vehicles that are already out there and a more efficient use of the fleet?
Well, a total efficient product would be to allow the entire industry to do street hails and to also do a prearrangement. I mean, that's what we did during the recent hurricane. We basically said the entire industry could do pickups. That's the most efficient. But the TLC has decided to segregate efficiencies. So, and the other thing is
I guess I'd also point, you know, just because you're not solving every problem in the world doesn't mean you can't solve one problem, but okay.
No, no, but the other thing is, this is an evolving technology. There are many companies that don't have it, and many black car and livery companies. Within the next five years, everyone will be communicating through apps. It's just like, how do you communicate with your kids? I text them now. Five years ago, I talked to them. You know, 10 years ago, we used to use the house phone. No one even uses a house phone anymore. It's an evolving technology. In five years, the way that we will order a car on prearrangement will be through an app.
Well, I'm not sure which way that point cuts, but I don't want to, we got a lot of people to get through, so I won't
I appreciate the extra time.
Thank you. Mr. Laslow, and we are
Thank you very much.
And I, we're going to stick to three minutes, you know, for industry leaders who are speaking in some sense on behalf of many entities, you know, we might go flexible here and there, but we're going to really stick to three minutes. Tony Ialucci, and then Guy Plumb will be after that.
All right, good morning. My name is George Laslow. I'm here representing simply the ridership in New York City. If you remember, I was in front of you at the taxi fare hike increase, so I have no
Welcome back.
Thank you. No other reason to be here except to make sure that I, as a passenger, get a quick and fast fare and a safe ride, and that I can get out fast fare, and a safe ride, and that I can get out as quickly as possible to go to my destination. So I'm all for e-hail applications. Give just a quick example, I was standing in front of the UN about a week ago, at about 7:00 PM. I was there for 25 minutes. Not a single taxi that was on, ready for me to be picked up, was available. There were tons of taxis, all of them occupied. Not a bus came by for the same 25 minutes. There was a woman in standing in front of me, also had her hand up, who would have gone first, because I was behind her. She actually kept her hand up like this, even when the lights changed red, and there were nothing, there was nothing coming. So that shows you that the importance of e-hail applications is important. However, I'm here to talk about both the TPEP and the e-hail. And I have to tell you that I have lots of concerns about the current rules as they are written. I have submitted a spreadsheet, actually, for both the e-hail and the TPEP as my comments. I made 64 comments on TPEP and 26 on e-hail. But I wanted to tell you quickly here what my main concerns are. And those are, that the rules, the way that they are written currently, are entirely too onerous on everyone. This will discourage competition, because companies will not want to take the time and effort to implement these systems, and/or they will take a huge risk. Actually, the companies that are most favored here are the ones that currently provide TPEP. Obviously, there are no e-hail yet, so they would be at an advantage. But even they are exposed to lots of onerous things in these regulations at the moment, because everybody has to now talk to everybody else. My key problem with these regulations is that the amount of electronic communication that you're expecting to take place in real time is so much between the taximeter, the TPEP, the DIM, the PIN, the AVL, the credit card systems, and so on, is that it would be nearly impossible for anyone to provide the uptime that you're looking for. And I also would tell you that the rules, as they are currently written, in my mind, and I've been in the IT business for close to 40 years, that you're not going to see any of these applications for the next 18 to 24 months, because their rules are just too restrictive for anyone to get there in that period of time. For example, I don't see anywhere in these rules will simply allow somebody who has an e-hail application, and all you're trying to do is flag down a cab, and say, "Yes, I'm going to pick you up," and get in the cab, no payment. I don't see that clearly that that's allowed.
Then, just to clarify, that is absolutely permitted under these rules, and, you know, there are correspondingly fewer... Most of the requirements, I think, that you were talking about, I will look at your testimony in detail, though, I'm guessing, relate to the payment. Where we do, I think, have an obligation to get into pretty great detail, to make sure that people's credit cards are secure. But for somebody that just, "I want to get a cab, I'm going to come pick you up," that is permitted with a modicum of, the real restriction there is just that can't use it while the car's in motion. Anyway, go on, I'm sorry.
Okay. If that's the case, then I think the rules need to be clearer, because I did not read it that way. And I read both of these documents at least three times thoroughly. So I'm concerned that there are no escape routes. I don't know if some of you saw the movie Premium Rush, where the bicyclist goes from Columbia down to Chinatown, and they're being chased by the bad guys, and of course, they're dodging taxis and buses and all sorts of stuff. And the problem is that he tries to figure out, the rider, "Do I have an escape route?" As far as I read the regulations, there are no escape routes. There's one way to do these applications, and there are too many things in it that make it just difficult for anyone who wants to implement it to do so.
Mr. Laszlo, thank you very much. I will say to you and everyone that written testimony, if you submitted, I promise you will be read thoroughly by the staff and commissioners. They will, the staff, as we did with our previous, more intricate rules, staff will process everything and get you a full report of the comments that have been made, you know, collated, so you don't have to read the same thing 15 times. Thank you, Mr. Laszlo.
I have two questions.
Yeah.
When you said you were waiting 25 minutes in front of the UN the other day, were you aware of the application for a black car or a livery car? Were you aware of the applications that currently exist?
Yes. I do know that. And I think, well, since you brought up the question, I wasn't going to say anything about this, because the previous speaker, I think, is correct, that you have to worry about the problem of shifting this. However, if you do look at that, you need to also look at the fare differentials that exist between black cars and regular taxis. I personally would, I use black cabs when I go to the airport, for example, and back.
But why didn't you use that app to get a black car in front of the UN? I'm just curious as to what your thought process was.
I didn't think of it at the time, to tell you the truth. And I finally, after the 25 minutes, decided to walk.
I'm asking him, not you.
Yeah. By the way, as far as technology is concerned, just to still address your question, I think anything that has to do with inhibiting technology by any party is disingenuous in a way. You really have to allow these things to happen. It's going to happen no matter what. You'll be forced into it, no matter what happens.
I do agree with that last point, I think, out underscored. Mr., I'm sorry, Tony actually might be Ms., it says here with a Y, but now I'm told it's Ms. Ialucci.
Good morning. My name is Tony Ialucci, and I'm a member of the Hearing Loss Association of America, the nation's leading organization representing people with hearing loss. I'm the chair of the advocacy committee of the Manhattan chapter, and a member of the National Board of Trustees, and I would like to speak for just a couple of minutes about TPEP. I first like to thank Commissioner Yaski.
I'm sorry. Commissioner, no, it's Ms. Ialucci, I mispronounced it, she is representing... Ms. Ialucci, could you again say the organization that you are representing?
The Hearing Loss Association of America.
Hearing Loss Association of America.
I would first like to thank Commissioner Yaski and the TLC for your willingness to provide accommodation to people with hearing loss, first by facilitating the installation of induction loop technology in the taxi of tomorrow, which will enable a portion of the hearing loss population to better communicate with vehicle drivers. My organization actually participated in the pilot project to test that technology, and we have praised its inclusion in all of our local and national communication. Secondly, I would like to thank the TLC, specifically Brian Switzer, for your rapid response to my request for part accommodation at these public meetings. There are 36 million people in this country with hearing loss, approximately 17% of the population. In New York City, that translates into roughly 1.5 million people. These numbers are expected to escalate considerably with the graying of the baby boomer population and as a result of noise-induced hearing loss. Although the use of induction loops will be effective, there are degrees of hearing loss which it will not help. Someone who is profoundly deaf, or someone who has limited ability to distinguish speech sounds, a very common type of hearing loss. Many people who use induction loop technology need to supplement with the written word for complete understanding. I presented the idea of using the taxi video screens with voice-to-text software to the TLC several months ago, as a potential accommodation to be used by almost everyone with hearing loss. It should also be noted that written word has proven to be very effective in communicating with people for whom English is not their primary language, an obvious benefit considering New York City's diverse population. Current voice-to-text software training can accommodate accents, and perhaps could even translate to different languages in real time. Unfortunately, this idea has not been included in today's rulemaking proposals. I understand this and accept it. The technology is not available at this time, although I think it's very doable, so vendors should not be pressured into committing to make it happen. However, I am here to request the TLC support in exploring the feasibility of developing this technology. Although my understanding is that vendors are ultimately responsible for the screens, I would hope the TLC would feel a sense of responsibility to participate in this dialogue. I am one of the 36 million people with hearing loss. After years of deteriorating hearing, I became deaf seven years ago. If a fire engine were to drive into this room with its siren full blast, I would not hear it. Without the written word, lip reading is my lifeline. If you pulled the plug on those screens, my ability to communicate would cease. As soon as I enter a cab, anything the driver says to me, I cannot hear. If they ask me to repeat my location, or exactly where I want to be dropped off, if they respond to my request to take an alternate room, or just say hello, I cannot hear them. Drivers have tried to be helpful when I explain my need to communicate via lip reading. They do this by turning to face me, often while the cab is in motion. Obviously, a dangerous situation. When I asked my colleagues for examples of taxi communication situations, the overwhelming response was, "I just don't take cabs. It's too much anxiety." And finally, people with hearing loss in general have significantly elevated stress levels due to the strain of trying to access communication 24/7. I would imagine that driving a cab in New York City runs a close second. So I now join forces to try and create a smart, efficient, cost-effective way to lessen the stress and accommodate all people who are deaf or have hearing loss, by exploring and hopefully developing groundbreaking technology, once again spearheaded by the New York City Taxi and Limousine Commission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your assistance to the commission. And let me commit to you that we will continue to work with you on integrating the most useful, feasible technology for people with hearing loss into TPEP as we continue to go forward in development. So thank you again. The next speaker is Guy Palumbo, followed by Zohra Afshar, followed by John Masalino.
Good morning, Commissioner Yaski and members of the commission. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. I'm speaking on behalf of the Luxury Base Operators Association and the Agent Base Owners Association. We also like to extend congratulations to Commissioner Joe Nye. Basically, we're talking on the second set, meaning the, not the TPEP system, but the applications. There are several points which we have concerns with. First of all, generally speaking, the process and the promulgation of these rules has in the past followed, or has in the past, has followed the same general procedures which the TLC has used. Rarely have the TLC made significant changes after public testimony, at least to the best of our understanding. The process would have been a little bit better if we were allowed to have input during the process, and not once the program or the rules were promulgated. Timing. The rules were announced the same day as Hurricane Sandy, and many base owners really have not had an opportunity. Yes, the leaders of the various associations have, but not the input from all the base owners, especially in the devastated areas. We can identify Far Rockaway, Brighton Beach, and Throggs Neck as three areas that have not had their base owners allow or have the time, and even some in Queens who are still recouping from Hurricane Sandy, to provide input. And that's a holdback here. Model rules. Recently, the IATR held a conference on its very issue, the IATR International Association of Transportation Regulators, which I believe the commissioner is on the group, or the TLC is involved. They had published a 13-page document with suggestive model rules. These regulations were issued, or suggested regulations were issued by the IATR two weeks after the TLC published its own rules. We suggest that the commission analyze all these other rules and suggested rules, these model rules, which are from regulators from major cities around the world. They have worked on them before vote, you work, or read them before vote, give them. We do have copies of that available, and I'm sure there are people here, I believe, who have the actual 13-page document on suggested rules. However, if anybody needs them, we'll gladly forward them. The rush of public image. It appears from public statements, interviews, and publicly released emails that the TLC has one goal in mind, and that is to do something fast. There was a public-recognized fear that the TLC would be considered anti-technology. Unfortunately, there was such a rush to avoid this label, that serious mistakes are being made. Multiple devices. As a portion of the TLC rules explain, it would be conceivable or permissible for a technology developer to give out iPhones to all types of drivers, or the devices. The problem with that is, it's conceivable that a driver could be sitting there with five or six different devices on their dashboard, talking about distracted driving, as Deputy Commissioner Schwannie mentioned before. However, we also know that the New York Police Department, New York City Police Department, does not consider the TLC rules when it comes to the vehicle traffic law, as far as distracted driving, and there's been several cases of that, we're compounding a problem. Contract considerations. Another expressed concern by the TLC is that the contract for vendors supplying both hardware and services will expire by the end of February. Why the rush? Cannot the TLC, by mutual agreement with the vendors, extend that contract for 90 days, so that we all can get back to the drawing board, and as usual, try to tweak these? The consequences of rushing. As with the street hail rules, the same basic...
Can you, I'm going to ask you a sum up. Thank you.
Okay. While we do not know that there is, there are another study which was available indicating that 25% of the yellow taxis would be losing business. We have a copy of that study. The consequences of rushing with the street hail rules, same thing here. I cannot speak for others here, but I think it's a foregone conclusion, that if these rules are adopted, you're going to be back in court, and you're going to go back to square one all over again. Thank you. Comments are supposed to be made.
Thank you. Mr. Or, Zohra Afshar, followed by, well, the next, the two speakers after that are John Masalino, and then Amos Tamam from Verifone. I guess, repeat my invitation, I see also, then there are two other speakers from Verifone after that. If people want to consolidate and have, you know, five minutes, six, and seven, three, I'll make that deal in a heartbeat. Thank you. Mr. Afshar? Or not? Then, Mr. Masalino, or Mr. Tamam? Rather, and? These, they will introduce themselves. So we're everything Verifone.
Yeah, well, we will consolidate, but each one wants to address a...
You're very gracious. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today. I am John Masalino, and I represent Verifone Inc., one of the two current TPEP providers under contract with the TLC. We appreciate the commission's hard work in putting together both sets of rules regarding TPEP and e-hail applications. As you know, these proposed rules are very voluminous, and in addition, many sections very technical in nature, both in a technological implementation standpoint, as well as from a legal standpoint. We appreciate the time that TLC staff, as was mentioned in the presentation by Joanna Wee. We appreciate the efforts of all the staff reaching out to stakeholders. Unfortunately, because of the size and scope of the comments and discussion points, we have not finalized all of our review with the staff, but we hope to continue doing that. But we did submit a formal letter for the record with all our comments, and we just wanted to address a few of the more important points today for the commission's consideration. The first thing that we would like to ask is, since we know, based on what you said, you have over 40 people testifying, that various stakeholders providing testimony and opinions, which we assume will lead to at least a few, if not several amendments to the rules. We hope that the commission will take one simple ask, sorry about that, one simple ask, which is to not rush into approving the rules. They are too important for the future of the taxi industry, and we ask that the commission take time, perhaps, to publish the amended set of rules, and conduct at least one more hearing, so that they can be absorbed by all the stakeholders again. There are lots of times where there were several amendments made, a vote is had, and it's really, the public really is unsure as to what exactly was passed. So we do ask for that ability for one more hearing. Real quickly, from a legal standpoint, on the contract terms, one of our biggest concerns is the fact that the rules limit the contract to one year with owners. The intent of the rules is to promote open competition and keep prices affordable. However, by limiting the contract term to one year, and with determination for convenience upon 20 days, I have to add, it will restrict innovation, investment in new technology, and best pricing will be significantly, if not permanently affected, for the worse and not the better. It will create the opposite effect. Companies like Verifone cannot and will not invest and offer the best technology to its New York City customers if they cannot get a fair return on their investment. In addition, they will not be able to offer the best financial deals to owners, as they have been doing for the past five years with the current TPEP contracts. As you know, the current contracts have maximum pricing, and... As you know, the current contracts had maximum pricing, and that maximum pricing was never achieved with any of the owners. We ask that the, at the very least, they allow up to three-year contracts, which exist now, similar to the original LPEP rules that were passed. However, we do prefer that there be no restrictions at all so that we could engage in a business-to-business transaction. Secondly, it was mentioned that the TPEP rules will also force the authorized providers to enter into an MOU. In this instance, an MOU is a little bit strange term because it will be, in fact, be another contract which would not look much different, it seems, based on what our understanding is from the current master agreement with the TLC. And we do ask that, one, we have a better understanding of what will be, in fact, be obligated of the TPEP authorized vendors in the MOU so that we have a better understanding of what we're getting into, but also that if there were going to be terms and conditions in the MOU, that they actually be put into the rules so that there's no discrepancies going forward with various TPEP providers being treated differently from one MOU to another, and that all terms and conditions remain the same for everyone in the, in the industry. That's all I have to say. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Tamam of Verifone, who will discuss a couple of other technical issues.
Thank you. And while you're doing that, on the, no, on the, on the point about the term of the contract, I mean, I do, these, I think that is a fair point, Commissioner, that I do want to examine with the staff and see if merit's changing. I mean, to be short, I think there are a lot of things in these rules, a lot of the details that, the feedback from the stakeholders has been very helpful, and I think we'll have a better final product as a result, and that's--
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Governor and Commissioner, my name is Amos Tamam. I'm a senior vice president with Verifone. Been, been active in the New York City taxi market for 25 years. Glad to mention that I was the first one to deploy a credit card in taxi cabs back in 1994. We have objection, basically, I want to comment on the processing of payments. We have objections to this entire section. We will discuss them each separately. The first one, if the TPEP provider paid the taxi cab drivers directly, as written, the TPEP provider cannot charge any processing fee for this service. This economically not feasible and unfair. First, processing such payment is a service that has both administrative cost and risk. There is no reason why this service should be provided for free. Second, this provision treats the TPEP provider differently from the license app providers. It is our understanding that the app license, licenses will not be restricted as to what they can charge the drivers for fee. Excuse me. TPEP providers should be permitted to charge standard 5% for all credit cards and EHA and smartphone payments application processing. That's my first comment. It is also unreasonable for the TPEP provider to make funds available to drivers at no cost and to be able to access its funds within, and for the driver to be access, his funds within half a mile of the fleet garage. You would say it's almost impossible. The last comment I have is on the healthcare, healthcare fee. It is unreasonable and unfounded burden to process TPEP, for the TPEP providers, to deduct the six cents fee for every trip recorded on the TPEP system and to be reasonable for disposing such funds in an account specified by the commission. This is, under, under, I'm sorry, under presented, TPEP providers has never been required to collect any fees such as MTA tax, et cetera, and be responsible, I'm sorry, to the TLC for it. What is the basis for this rule? Why is it, why is it the responsibility of the TPEP provider? This raises unnecessary liability issues, additional administrative costs, and affects revenues and processing. This section should be eliminated from the rules.
You said that you guys do collect the MTA tax, or you don't?
Exactly not. It's the owner's responsibility, it's not the TPEP provider's responsibility.
I'm sorry, it's, the, could you just take it again? How does the MTA tax collection process work today?
So we're collecting the, reply to the data information, but it's the, ultimately is the owner's responsibility to collect the MTA tax.
So to the extent that the 50 cents is paid by the, in the first case, is paid by the passenger, going, if it's a credit card, you collect that, is that correct?
No.
In other words, you're saying you don't collect any credit card payments from the passenger?
No. No, the MTA is, is collected by the owner from the driver.
They pay the owner the same way they would pay the owner the fare, is that correct?
Correct.
Same way you give the owner the fare, you give them that 50 cents--
We as a TPEP, we're just providing the data. We're collecting the data and providing the owners, or the fleet owners, with the tools so they know how much MTA taxes, taxes collected by what driver.
I see, but you're saying the funds don't, don't flow through you, they flow from Visa directly to the medallion owner?
To the merchant of record.
To the merchant of record. Are you merchant of record for--
In, in some cases, we do for individual drivers, but again, we do not collect the MTA tax. It's the owner who collects the MTA tax on his drivers.
Although, I guess in those cases, you're saying you collect the MTA, you collect the funds from the passenger, then it flows, then pass it along to the medallion owner?
No. When we're acting as a merchant of record, it's mainly for individual drivers or small owners that don't have the means and capability administratively to handle the credit cards and the administration associated with that.
But in these cases, am I wrong that you collect the full amount paid by a passenger in each trip?
Correct.
Including the MTA tax?
Correct. And we pay 95% of whatever we collect back to the driver, that's including the MTA tax.
I see.
So the driver is collecting the MTA tax eventually.
I see. Okay. Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, is there further question?
Could you explain why we put that health--
The question was, what's the rationale for the, for having the TPEP provider handle that? Simply the ease of administration to have two or three entities process, take out all those paid, six cent per trip payments, and forward them to whatever entity is selected to do the healthcare benefits, rather than have 13,000 medallion owners have to do that calculation and send checks? It seemed, you know, simply easier to have three, let's assume there's two or three at most, TPEP providers, that two checks is easier than 13,000 checks.
It's easier for us, but not for them, because they have to pay for the administration costs for all this.
Right, but the cost, their, their cost presumably, doing it for all the trips, will be less than the aggregate processing costs of the individual medallion owners, and in the end, that gets reflected in the pricing for their services. In other words, whatever their costs are, are passed on to their customers, namely the medallion owners. So rather than have the medallion owners responsible for that bookkeeping individually, the TPEP providers are responsible for that bookkeeping centrally, and then each medallion owner pays one 13,000th of that cost in the form of their fees to the TPEP providers.
Can I comment tonight?
Please.
So, in my testimony, I did not say it's not possible. I think it's, it's, it's not right, it's not fair, because you really have to look into the details. The majority of the cash flow does not pass to the TPEP providers. It goes directly to the merchant owner, it's relation between the drivers and the owners, not as a TPEP. What you're asking us to do is really, is step here in the middle. Most of the funds are not passing through us. That's really going to create a nightmare of account receivable to, for us. There is no clear method for us, or how we're going to be, to begin with, collect these six cents. What's clear is that we have a liability, we're going to have the liability on the TPEP vendors to pay the bills whether or not we're collecting the funds, and that's the reason it should have need to be addressed.
Understood. I, I, we're, I'm happy to sit down with you and continue to work through this with you and figure out the easiest way for those funds to flow, recognizing that the easiest might be the least difficult of two or three options. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jason Gross. I'm also with Verifone, and I'm responsible for what you see on the passenger information monitors for Verifone for the last three years, and for the first two of those, to a large degree also for CMT. And I wanted to address two points. One is the amount of reserved space for the TLC, and the second is the limitations on what that space can be used for. The way the rule is proposed, you have a, up to one minute for a prologue, and they would like what they call four minutes of a 12-minute loop. I think our data and your data that we share with you shows that the average ride is now under some 11 minutes. So you're talking about now 10 minutes, once the prologue is done, and taking four of that 10 is 40% of that experience. Just to give you guys a little bit more, what typically both platforms try to do is have 50% of that loop be content, and on most cases, no more than 40% of that be advertising. So you're either replacing all of the advertising or most of the content. And when the city wanted to be able to distribute content to the passengers, I think both vendors, I can certainly speak for us, worked very cooperatively to create a second channel, to give the users the choice they have, like they do at home, to choose one channel versus another. I think we all know that that channel is chosen very infrequently. I believe the data is less than 2%, perhaps less than 1. You've run PSAs on that. We're more than happy to give the user that choice, but where that content should be isn't that same 60% for content, but on the TLC channel. We don't quite understand why there's a reason to change that as it is now. Secondarily, the restrictions on the use of that time are much broader than they have been, both in rule and in practice, and our chief concern is that we've seen over the last year or so, and my forebearer, Amos, tells me, going back to the beginning with New York City and Company, which I believe is not a city agency, some of that space has been reserved, but when that entity is promoting with their space some event that is, let's say, sponsored by American Express or some other for-profit organization, you're essentially competing with the TPEP vendors for sales of ad space to those clients. And where we are on that is essentially, we've, you know, had it happen that someone says, "Oh, no, we're already getting that." And while we're happy to promote certain events, and we think that's very reasonable on the main channel, when it comes down to depriving us of revenue, we're creating both competition and undermining the economic model, which I think has been effective for all the partners, you know, as Amos mentioned, we've never had to charge the full price. In some cases, it goes, you know, all the way down, and that's because we're able to support that with advertising. You know, and just as a note, whether or not this is asked, you know, we've worked very hard, and I believe when I started, the rate of turnoffs. So if at the beginning, in the middle, at the end, at some point, turning off was, you know, nearing 30%, and we've got that way down under 15, we think we provided passengers with enough options to watch, to turn off, to watch a second channel. You know, we think that the, regardless of what you may hear in some survey, depending on the way the question is asked, people are broadly happy with it. I would say from the advertising perspective, local businesses are thrilled with it, right? When it comes to Fashion Week, and you have these small designers, small shops, it's really one of the most effective ways for city businesses to promote themselves. So what we're really trying to do is kind of essentially keep the status quo. It's worked very well. We have no complaints, and, you know, we just like to essentially keep things where they are.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Is that, are there, or yes, there is one additional.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Dwayne Dean, Director of Strategic Planning for Verifone. I'm here today to talk to you about the EHA apps. The rules as written do not address several factors that need to be clarified. There is no guidance on what the app licensee is permitted to charge drivers, and owners, or passengers, for that matter, for the use of the apps. TPEP providers have to inform the TLC of all of its rates and all limited in its processing fees, but there seems to be no restrictions on the charges that an app can charge. Currently, under the current rules, TPEP providers can only charge a surcharge of 5%. But under the EHA rules, there is no statement as to what these app providers can charge. This will create problems in the industry and with the riding public. Remember, it will be the TLC that will receive consumer complaints if drivers and passengers feel they are being overcharged. And as the presentation showed, the consumer protection is what the industry is looking for. If the TLC would permit additional charges by the licensees to the passengers, it should not be, it should be mandated that such charges be included on the receipt generated by the taximeter. Not mandating this will take, will make the trip log data ineffective and will create a false receipt of what the passengers actually charged for the cab ride. Again, this can become a public nuisance nightmare for the TLC if consumer complaints are made and there's no evidence that the rate the passenger has been charged. Again, in summary, the presentation presented by the TLC meant a consumer protection. However, the presentation failed to mention passenger surcharges. They seem to be permitted and not disallowed under the rules, leaving app companies to charge, again, as I mentioned, whatever they want, when the current TPEP providers under the current rules are charged 5%.
Just to, are you suggesting that we should set the price of a surcharge, or simply make sure that it's disclosed to the passenger? In other words, you're saying we should get into the business of saying what an app can charge the passenger to find a vehicle?
What I'm saying is, there should be a level playing field. If you're allowing, says, TPEP provider, and you're capping us at 5%--
Although that wouldn't, of course, in the new TPEP rules, there's no, we don't regulate pricing.
Commissioner, if I can add a little bit. I think we're not telling the, the commission what we're suggesting as far as how much the shoe charge, et cetera. We as Verifone may even come up with our own application, so I'm not against it. We're not against it. What I'm saying is, you'll have to deliver a full disclosure for the passenger.
Agreed.
So if an app A charged a dollar for the service, for the agreement, for somebody to hail a cab, it need to be disclosed, and it need to be disclosed on the receipt as well as an email, and, as well as on a--
Yeah, and I, in going over your comments prior to this, I think the point about disclosure is a good one. I think our rules should be tighter on ensuring that there's, we should have a mechanism to, if an app is deceptive in its pricing, to go after them and stop that. There needs to be disclosure of the pricing. But, but I, also, cards on the table, I'm very hesitant to get into the business of regulating pricing. That's what the marketplace is for, and I figure customers are smart. Thank you. Okay, I'm sorry. So next, we have Richard Thaler, followed by Jeremy Phillips, and then Jay Breitman.
Jay, ask you, and commissioners, I prepared two sets of comments for each chapter, 75 and 78. I'll begin with comments for chapter 75. The TLC should be complimented for moving to a standards-based authorized vendor approval process, but hopefully the commission will also consider requiring compliance for all remaining violations of payment card industry rules and practices. Considerations should also be given to limiting the installation of features and functions to only those that are essential for safe, efficient, convenient, low-cost taxi transportation service. Unnecessary costly features and functions with related costly data communications and the migration of trip information from the taxi exterior to the passenger's compartment should be avoided. The TLC now has the previously overlooked opportunity to remedy the most contentious TPEP issue by complying with the Durbin Amendment to the Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform Consumer Protection Act, giving merchants the option to offer discounts for cash payments but cannot favor one card over another. Then, neither the drivers nor the medallion owners no longer would be required to pay the transaction fees. Hard on the heels of the proposed MTA fare increase, the TLC must comply with this federal act by applying just a small adjustment to the fare drop and unit fare elements, which could also include the healthcare contribution for this purpose. The 250 of fare drop should be increased to about 270, and the 50 cent unit fare drop, uh, unit fare should be increased to about 55 cents. Other flat fares and extras should be adjusted accordingly. If a passenger pays by cash, the driver would press the, the cash code on the taximeter, and the taximeter fare code is discounted back to the cash rates of 250 and 50 cents. Payment gateways and merchant-acquire transaction processes should be required to admit, remit at least the regulated cash fare rate, and the drivers, and, rate to the drivers with all, finally, with all tolls, taxes, and tips, finally at full face value. with all tolls, taxes, and tips, finally at full face value for all trips. Second item. The commission should enable each independent contractor/lease driver to become or select a merchant of record. The driver's choice of merchant should be filed by the merchant with the TLC and distributed to all approved T-Pep vendors. Then the TLC rules must require that the driver's T-Pep login TLC license ID must require the T-Pep provider to determine which payment gateway must be the routing destination for each fare payment transaction for the driver's shift. For this purpose, the commission must require that each selected payment gateway provide APA routing software to all T-Pep vendors for installation on all T-Pep systems.
Ms. Fair, if you could sum up. Thank you.
I'll tell you what, you have it in writing.
Thank you.
I would like, since I prepared two comments, two sets of comments for 78 and 75, I'd like to make one comment about chapter 78.
Please do that.
Under the definitions in chapter 78, e-Hail application, items 2 and 3. Item 2 said, "Allow a passenger to hail a taxi via the electronic device," and 3, "allows a driver to receive a hail request." In agreement with Mr. Sono's comments, these are in clear violation of prohibited pre-arrangement, and items 2 and 3 certainly should be deleted from the e-Hail definition. The only other, out of all of these, the only other comment I'd like to make about 78 is item number 4, which you have. The requirements that any licensed e-Hail application must operate through the T-Pep system must be changed to allow transactions processing independent of T-Pep. In order to ensure total security for passenger cardholders, the e-Hail payment app tokenizes the passenger's payment cards, but the tokenized cards can only be processed through the driver's merchant processor and payment gateway. Tokenized transactions are essential in order to prevent the security breaches such as the global payment security breach suffered by a T-Pep vendor over a year ago, but has not yet been addressed by this commission. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you for your input.
Are there actually comments?
What is that? You have both sets.
We, yes, there are sufficient here, it appears, and we'll distribute them right Jeremy Phillips, followed by Jay Bregman, followed by David Pollak. Commissioners and members of the public, I will plan to break at 12:30, unless for a half-hour break. Unless, it appears we're close to being able to finish, and we could push through, they'll finish at, say, 12:45, then we'll go ahead and do that. Otherwise, we'll break at 12:30. Let's, let's see if we can. Mr. Phillips, followed by Mr. Bregman.
Thank you, Chairman Yaski, and members of the commission. My company is Ride Charge Incorporated. I'm speaking on behalf of Ride Charge. Our product, Taxi Magic, the 4 million smartphones and passengers that have downloaded our app, as well as the tens of millions who have used other of our electronic booking channels to request a taxi, as well as my several thousand Twitter followers. My name is Jeremy Phillips, and I'm on the leadership team in a business development, fleet sales, and city procurement capacity at Ride Charge, a company that was founded in 2007. I previously operated a taxi cab fleet. Ride Charge makes Taxi Magic, the award-winning mobile application for booking, tracking, charging, and expensing taxi rides. Since our launch in December 2008, the Taxi Magic app has become hugely popular in larger cities, where it is electronically bonded to the dispatch systems of taxi fleets. Orders are thus placed with only a few taps on the phone, and the dispatched taxi appears on the phone's map as it makes its way to pick you up. Taxi Magic is the number-one app and has consistently been found in the top 20 iTunes travel apps ever since its launch. Apple has included Taxi Magic in major marketing efforts numerous times. Today, Taxi Magic is available in some 80 markets in the United States and is operating with over 150 transportation companies, 150 fleets, on five mobile phone platforms. As you know, in New York City, the TLC introduced a system in September allowing riders to call for a wheelchair-accessible yellow cab using a smartphone app, a website, a text message, or a voice call. The TLC's chosen app, called Wow Taxi, Wheels on Wheels Taxi, is powered by my company, Taxi Magic. It is an incredible source of pride for our employees to be part of a program that brings the well-known, high-quality New York City taxi cab service to those New Yorkers with accessibility requirements. I am submitting this testimony concerning the proposed rule changes that the commission is considering with regard to e-hails and the contemplated licensing of e-Hail application providers. I will also note that we are a T-Pep provider in some 15 markets across the United States. My testimony is based on my work at Ride Charge, as well as our top executives' over 30 years of entrepreneurial and executive management experience in enterprise and network management software business, as well as our unique perspectives. The only taxi app provider currently operating legally in New York City is the Wow Taxi app. We at Ride Charge are obviously proud of our accomplishments. We are especially proud of operating legally in several markets, regardless of the specific demands of the jurisdictions' regulations. Why? Operating legally is the only way that our company operates. In sum, that is our business model. We look before we launch, we talk to regulators, we do so as partners with those local regulatory agencies and with the legal fleets. So with that perspective, I'm here today to describe some of the key concerns that Ride Charge has regarding the proposed e-Hail rules. Namely, there's a failure to address provider experience requirements and their financial stability, fails to provide guidance as to integration standards, and a general dependency on the T-Pep 2.0 requirements, or sorry, T-Pep 2.0 providers. There's a general security compliance measure, lack of general security compliance measures, and there's generally an inability to create a sustainable business model for our company under these rules. Accordingly, Ride Charge requests that the commissioners consider more detailed comments as they deliberate in the final form of the proposed T-Pep and e-Hail rules, which I've delivered upfront there. These proposed rules, and their move to allow for applications to operate with New York City taxi cabs, are welcomed by my company. Even so, Ride Charge would ask that the commission, as it looks forward, also looks back in time to the experience, integration, security measures, and practices that made sense during this T-Pep 1.0, and that has worked for the benefit of the TLC and the riding public. I'm certainly available to answer any questions regarding these points. Thank you for your time, attention, and consideration on our comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Bregman, and then followed by David Pollak from CTS.
Yes, Mr. Jeremy Phillips, and some of our drivers here to testify as well. I think you'll want to hear what they have to say.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Cooper?
I'm Jay Bregman. I'm the founder and CEO of Halo. I'm here to speak about the e-Hailing and T-Pep rules. Every 10 seconds across the world, a licensed taxi driver accepts a Halo e-Hail, and with each match, we help chip away at the millions of dollars lost by drivers and hours wasted by passengers due to inefficiency in the market. Halo solves the line-of-sight problem, and nowhere will our impact be felt greater than right here. In 2005, your predecessors signed contracts to create T-Pep, a universal standard for credit card acceptance and data gathering, designed to make taxis more convenient and safe. Despite facing near-universal resistance, it is now an irreplaceable part of the fabric of New York life. But the work contemplated and specifically referenced in the original T-Pep contracts remains unfinished. Despite having the vision of smartphone applications before smartphones were part of common language, let alone usage, T-Pep vendors stuck to processing cards and innovation stalled. Other cities started to catch up. You now have the opportunity to realize that world-beating vision and restore the mantle of innovation and service to New York. But the very same industries that oppose T-Pep, black car and livery services, are now putting forth similar arguments, alarmist arguments, against e-Hailing. Such arguments ignore the evidence that e-Hailing works, it has been proven on New York-style scale and sophistication, and it will do nothing but good for passengers and drivers. Despite Halo drivers having traveled over 3 million miles since our launch in London just a year ago, passengers, on average, wait only 2 minutes from tap to taxi. E-hails are not radio calls, and they are not dispatches. They are the inevitable evolution of the arm flail, the doorman's whistle, the light outside the hotel. E-hails are close-in-time encounters with built-in safeguards to prevent disruptions to street hail service and which all but eliminate refusals. Halo's model is to distribute a small number of incremental hails across a very large number of drivers, providing fares when they otherwise would have been cruising empty. Halo makes more cabs available without putting more cabs on the street. As such, we supplement, but do not supplant, traditional street hail service. Halo drivers do and always will spend a majority of their time hunting for street hails, and part of our model is we give drivers a free toolkit to help them with this aspect of their day. That's why Halo only works with taxis who can pick up off the street, which means we only work with yellow cabs in New York City. Safety is paramount at Halo, and since our very first driver, we have distributed smartphone cradles and chargers for free and required their use when using Halo. Our application has been designed to enable one-tap interaction to accept e-hails when the vehicle is in motion. This is exactly the same standard this commission voted to enact only some months ago when you approved the street hail livery rules and provided a specific exemption for on-the-road interaction with smartphones when the communication occurs via one touch. We believe the final e-Hail rule should contain this exact language, but strangely, they currently do not. In addition, there are thousands of private livery and black car services currently operating in New York right now who are interacting with smartphones on the road today. All we're asking for is a level playing field with applications in New York City. Finally, we believe special consideration needs to be given to the role of T-Pep providers in the introduction of e-Hailing in New York City. The TLC has mandated that e-Hail licensees integrate into T-Pep, but we believe the regulations need to be extended in order to allow, to require, T-Pep vendors to expose information other than simple fare information, and that T-Pep providers should be required to produce external interfaces according to a common standard to ensure they are not a barrier to the perfect option of e-Hailing. T-Pep providers now play the role of utilities, and they must be regulated as such to prevent them slowing the pace of innovation and helping recast New York as the most innovative taxi market in the world. We urge the TLC to pick up the reins of innovation and competition and finish the task which started when the contracts currently up for renewal were conceived, and we pledge our support to the TLC and the drivers and the people of New York to make sure that this time, we get it right. New Yorkers cannot wait any longer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
In London, you said you initiated this plan in London a year ago. Is it the same structure in London as it is here in New York City, where we have, the yellow cabs are only allowed to pick up street hails and cannot take pre-arranged vehicles, and we have another industry or another two industries that do that? Is it the same structure?
Melissa, one of our drivers, probably best came from London, probably best illustrated from a driver's perspective. Melissa, do you want to take that question?
I also have to say, I was just in London in September and observed Halo there, and their yellow taxis...
I'm sorry, just for the core reporter, could you just introduce yourself by name?
My name is Melissa Plow, and I'm a yellow cab driver.
I have a very specific question. Is it the same industry setup in London as it is here in New York City?
Yes, there's an industry that accepts street hails, and there's an industry that accepts calls. And in London, Halo is operating in the black cabs, which is the equivalent to New York's yellow cabs, where you raise your arm, you get in a cab, the meter gets turned on.
And if I might follow up on this, I mean, I take it the reason behind the question is to talk about, or to ask the question about, will this impact those private hire and livery services? The answer, and you'll see unequivocally in the testimony provided by John Mason, who heads the public carriage office in London, which is the TLC equivalent, it has not. Half of the drivers in London are using this technology. Halo is doing over $1 million a week in transactions, and the fact is that the black car and livery companies, which have adopted technology, changed with the times, and improved their services, are flourishing. They are doing better than they did before.
Mr. Fair, so you're in London, and you're in any American cities?
Yes, Halo currently operates in four countries. We have 135 employees. We operate in Dublin, Toronto, Chicago, Boston. We have an office in Tokyo, but yes, we're currently in the United States. We're in Boston and Chicago.
How many in Chicago, and how many cabs are you?
I don't know the exact number of Chicago. We have 20,000 registered drivers across the entire network. Bear in mind, the company's only been around for a year.
Thank you, Ms. Bregman. Thank you. Yeah? John Gere.
Well, there are, I'm going to go now to David Pollak and then to Ethan Gerber, and there are, one, two...
Sir, we have them on the list. It'd be great to hear from some of them.
You know, I understand, but I want to get through everybody. I know that there are other Halo people signed up, but rather than have them all in a block.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Pollak, Mr. Gerber. There are, after those two, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. There are 14 people plus these two, so a total of 16 people signed up to speak. As I said, we will get through, I guess, another four, perhaps, before 12:30, and at that point, we will break.
Good morning, Commissioners. Before we start, I just wanted to say I'm very glad that Donnie Sanchez, the president of the Livery Roundtable, is with us today. Most of you don't know, but this woman spent seven hours on her roof while the floodwaters and Staten Island came in, and some of the neighbors weren't as lucky, so I'm glad to be here.
Can you please, for a stand, so that the others can...
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. On behalf of the Committee for Taxi Safety, I'd like to take a few moments to share some thoughts on the e-Hail app and regulations that are before you today. The idea of having an application for use of a smartphone for e-hails as a convenience to passengers and a potential economic opportunity for drivers seems to be a win-win, is a win-win in all potential passengers and for yellow cab drivers. Indeed, the last iteration of the T-Pep contracts contemplates that a variety of suppliers would provide these applications. Taxi apps are long overdue. Delivery industry has apps that allow for greater convenience and less wait times for those services. We salute that segment's success. As technology has made it faster and more convenient for passengers to call for taxi service, no matter where they are and no matter when, we must make sure that the new service allows passengers to actually get a ride of their choice. The app for taxis should operate on a level playing field, as someone mentioned before. The rules before you would place a restriction on the ability of yellow cab drivers to respond to an e-Hail until the vehicle is stopped. There are no similar restrictions that apply to liveries. In fact, this commission recently approved rules for the livery street hail license that allows for a single-tap response for devices such as a mounted smartphone or tablet to respond to an e-Hail request for a ride without regard to whether the car is in motion. The same rule needs to be applied here. In order to have close, in-time pickups of fares from e-Hail, the cabs need to be in motion, just as they are for regular street hails. The one-tap response is no more distracting than any other piece of equipment in the cab, including the air conditioner or radio tuner. To maintain this restriction just for yellow taxi drivers will result in these taxi apps not being effective for customers or drivers. In fact, attempting to make drivers stop or pull over will almost assuredly result in more accidents and more traffic. When cell phones arrived as a way of life, the yellow taxi industry did not propose that livery should be banned from accepting a call from a phone and use on the street from a prospective passenger. We recognized and accepted that there were two methods for getting a ride. We accepted that, that in fact, we lost market share for passengers seeking rides while they were on the street. No one segment of our industry should have an advantage because of these rules. The same level playing field for accepting an e-Hail or dispatch of one tap should be the rule. With regard to the proposed T-Pep regulations, again, we believe that there should be a level playing field. We believe there should be an easy, universally-accepted integration between T-Pep providers and taxi app makers. Any licensee of the TLC should be able to have a simple methodology to integrate with T-Pep providers. The licensed app maker, once approved, should not be blocked by other industry players because ultimately, it is the passengers who will lose the benefit of better service, and the passengers who should decide what apps are best. and the passengers who should decide what apps are best and which applications they will use. Additionally, drivers should not lose out on fares because the TLC mandates T-PeP integration but does not make the integration universal so that any licensed application provider can connect. This is simple enough to achieve by the T-PeP providers. With those two suggestive revisions, the Committee for Taxi Safety supports these proposed rules so that we can provide passengers with more options and better service for when they need a ride. I also agree with one of the speakers who mentioned that the contract should be longer than one year. It's hard to get involved in anything in this industry with a one-year contract that you're already thinking about the second year before you start the first year. And it should also be noted that pre-arrangement consists of knowing a pickup location, a drop-off location, and what the fare will be. And there are some apps where you do not know what the fare will be because you do not know the drop-off location. Any questions?
Thank you, very cogent. Thank you very much, Mr. Pollak. Ethan Gerber, followed by Avic Kabeza.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Ethan Gerber from the Greater New York Taxi Association. And good morning, gentlemen, and gentlemen. Congratulations. It's always interesting coming to TLC and listening to the statistics because I learned today that 40% of yellow cabs are driving around empty. Would have been a great statistic to know about when we voted to put 2,000 more medallions on the street. Would have been very interesting, I think, and very interesting about 9,000 new outer boroughs. We are in favor of technology, and we're in favor of advancing technology, but we think we should go slowly and carefully and create the right rules and the right technology for this industry and for both industries. It's not about getting it fast, it's about getting it right. We had reported, we had proposed broadcast technology, which would have solved the speaker's problem who came off the, who couldn't find something at the UN. Broadcast technology would tell the passengers where there are empty yellow cabs so that they can match up and go to those yellow cabs. If you've come out of Penn Station, you come out of Madison Square Garden, sometimes after a game, after a show, you want to know which corner to go stand on. There's cabs, let's find them. There are numerous questions with the way these rules are intended and unintended consequences. And I do applaud the TLC for moving in the right direction. I'd just like to do it carefully. What is going to happen when I raise my hand and I pass to go to the person who pinged first? Or worse yet, maybe when the African-American raises his hand and is passed to go to the person who pinged first? What's going to be the TLC rules, and how's the TLC going to handle that? These rules don't address it. It was raised by Ashwani Trabura, and I applaud it that this is an actual issue. But before we set this in motion, maybe we should address some of these concerns. Again, I, one of my colleagues so far, one of my colleagues said, it would be great if you announced policy, if you have meetings with the industry and talk about policy and direction before you set it on paper, and not tinker at the edges. I agree with David Pollak and others who say that any innovation should be through the T-PeP system. It's the safest system. It's a better system than phones. As some of you will recall, we fought very hard in the dispatch world with accessibles to make sure drivers were not holding BlackBerrys. We still think it's very, very dangerous and illegal, no matter what the TLC. The TLC does not have the power to invalidate vehicle and traffic laws. It's dangerous, it's illegal, we don't want handheld. Everything should be run through the T-PeP system, and I urge you to do that. And I did sign, and the Greater New York Taxi Association did sign on behalf with some of the livery concerns, which, and our concern was slowing this down and doing it right, which is a little bit different. And where I part from my brothers in the liveries is that the rules should be fair across the board. If it is a dispatch, or I should say, if it is not a dispatch, if it's a street hail for me to ping someone and get a car a block or two away, that's a street hail, and it's also a street hail in the livery side. By same token, if it's okay for me to ping and get a car 10 minutes away, that's a dispatch. I think we need to recognize that we are encroaching in each other's world and that what we do not want is a completely unregulated market. It's worked very well for New York. They have options, and we strongly urge this commission, proceed, but proceed carefully and take all these considerations into account. Thank you.
Thank you. Avic Kabeza, followed by Pat Russo. I think that is probably all we will have time for. We will then break at 12:30 for 15 minutes. We will resume at 12:45, and I know commissioners have some other obligations. I know that we will be losing commissioners pretty much as, from this point on. I assure you again, commissioners, you'll get a full report from staff detailing issues that are raised in a cogent way, consistent with their usual cogency. Yes.
Good morning, Commissioner. We listened to what you said, and Anat is from the Livery Roundtable, is going to yield her time to me, so is that possible that I can get longer time? Good morning, commissioners. My name is Avic Kabeza. I'm the CEO of Carmel and a member of the Livery Roundtable. For those of you who do not know, we represent about 240 livery bases.
Does that microphone come out of its thing?
Yeah, so the podium is designed for people of my height, I apologize.
My name is Avic Kabeza. I'm the CEO of Carmel and a member of the Livery Roundtable. For those who don't know, we represent about 240 livery bases, approximately 14,000 livery drivers. We oppose the proposed rules primarily for the reasons mentioned here already, which is the pre-arrangement of a yellow. But it's not because we do not believe technology should not exist in yellow taxi, but because those rules completely disregard New York City's ground transportation needs and therefore higher industry. And all for what? For venture capitalists' companies to make money. I take personal offense when people tell me that we need to copy what is being done in London or in San Francisco and how wonderful they work in other cities. London became, seems to have become the New York City golden standard. But London is not New York City. And for those that do not know, I would like to shed some light on this beautiful Halo drivers and taxi. London is half the visitors New York City has, 27 million versus 51 that we have. London has double the taxis, double the number of taxis, 20,000 versus 13,000. And London does not have a cap on yellow taxis, on taxis. So if there's more demand, there's more taxis. And the most important thing, believe it or not, a London taxi driver can refuse a ride. So how can you even compare what this TLC did for the transportation of New York City and say, wow, adopt a London concept? Let's go to other cities. People suffer all around the nation from poor pre-arrangement service level, not from lack of street hail supply. New York City is the only one being blessed with such a high demand of street hail and lack of service. San Francisco has a 35%, and you saw the letter from the commissioner of San Francisco. New York City has a, I'm sorry, San Francisco has a 35% no-show when you pre-arrange a taxi, on average, by study. So we are exactly the opposite. No one complains about the no-show of the pre-arrange. People complain about the lack of yellow taxi available in the street. So taking an action that would increase the pre-arrangement service in New York City while decreasing the yellow taxi availability for street hail could not be more detached from the city's need. There comes, of course, the big argument, we do not want to appear like we are not tech-friendly. When Commissioner Yaski met with us, because some of those smartphone applications start pushing themselves into the, for higher industry, some in a legal way, some illegal, we met with Commissioner Yaski, we did not say no to technology. We said yes to technology. And all we asked was that those companies, just as we are, would be regulated, would be held accountable. We have been informing, and I want the commissioners to know, we have been informing the TLC of illegal operating smartphone application companies since January of 2011. And what was done? Nothing was done by the TLC. Now, we have repeatedly asked the TLC to issue rules that will govern the four higher apps, repeatedly, and the TLC has not done so. So the TLC says to us that they don't do so because they do not like to interfere with companies' business model. Isn't that some sort of an oxymoron coming from a regulatory agency? That's number one. And let's be face it, what a double standard. Us, yes, them, no. So for two years now, smartphone apps exist without rules and regulation. The natural question is, if the TLC doesn't wish to interfere with apps when it comes to the four higher, why are we being presented here with rules that allow pre-arranged to yellow? Let me tell you the story, the reason. The answer is simple. Without those rules, companies like Halo cannot make money. Companies like Uber cannot make money. Without those rules, they cannot make money. So in order to make money, the exclusive right of the T-PeP provider, okay, of the taxi payment had to be amended. It should come to no surprise that today we're not just discussing smartphone app to the yellows, we're also discussing the T-PeP. So Commissioner, you're highly intervening in business models, you're actually paving the way for this to happen. When we met with the commissioner about the issue of smartphone for the yellow, we did not say no to technology. We said yes to technology for payment. The gentleman from Halo said, it's like broadcasting a hotel light. It's just the doorman in the building. Absolutely correct. But a broadcast on a hotel light does not mean Avic Kabeza, the driver, has been paired with a customer that is waiting at the lobby. So we said yes to technology. Allow broadcasting. This way, by the way, if I accept a ride and I turn my light off on my way, your rules allow me to accept a street hail, is that correct?
I'm sorry.
If I accept a street hail, a pre-arrangement of a yellow, while in route to the pre-arrangement, your statement is, I'm allowed to accept a person in the street raising their hand, isn't it?
While in route to-
Yes. The answer is yes. So they think that they eliminate discrimination. In reality, you have just increased discrimination because I turn off my light, since I have accepted the pre-arranged, and now I open my window, where do you want to go? No, thank you. Where do you want to go? No, thank you.
That would be a refusal, just whether they-
How will you prove? I have accepted the pre-arranged trip. I have accepted the pre-arranged trip, Commissioner, and this guy's complaining about me, and you check your record, and I have a-
Any inquiries to the destination followed by refusal would be a summons of all that.
But that's not what it is. It says here that I can accept the, we said yes to broadcast, not to pre-arrangement. This is an extension, a true extension of the hand, and not a pre-arrangement of the taxi.
And the point you're making is how are you going to prove it?
That's correct.
Unless you have that record that you're on your way, I'm off the-
I'm taking no one to Brooklyn, trust me. So we suggested that the person with the app can use a broadcast to say, I'm here. Then I'm as a taxi, I don't have to even look or to tap. The T-PeP system can say, passenger request, 56 in Madison, I'm heading towards this address. He doesn't know I'm coming. I see another street hailer, I pick them up. No arm done, nobody expects anything from anybody, and you improve. So when we came, when we came to this with the commissioner, the answer was that the smartphone companies cannot make money. They cannot make money under the broadcast model. Well, we have several companies in here that would love to do so. So in summary, New York City is not London, not San Francisco, or for that matter, no other city. And to protect the public and level the playing field, no provider for transportation should be allowed to offer transportation without being regulated when others are. Technology should and can be implemented in a way that does not disrupt the current New York City ground transportation system. We're asking commissioners to send the proposed rules back to the drawing board and ask the commissioner and his staff to come up with a comprehensive smartphone app rules and regulation that would apply to both the four higher apps and the yellow apps, not only the yellows. This is the only way the TLC can truly implement technology without reducing the level of available yellow taxis for street hail and preserve the highly praised New York City four higher business model.
Thank you.
I can answer questions.
Thank you very much.